At this time, I'll call the regular meeting of the Hamlet City Council to order. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. I see people from all over the county here tonight, so that says a whole lot for retired Chief White. And tonight, we're going to be recognizing Chief White, and so we'll progress with it. At this time, I will call Reverend Chris Hawkes to do the invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we counted the highest privilege to be able to come before you this evening in prayer, and we thank you, Lord, that you have given us through your son, Jesus, this audience with you. Lord, as I come before you this evening, I just want to thank you for our leadership. Your word commands us that we are to pray for our leaders. And Lord, I not only pray for them, I thank you for them, and I thank you for the leadership that they provide to our fair city here in Hamlet. Lord, I pray for this meeting tonight, and I pray that, Lord, the decisions that are made, every discussion, will bring glory and honor to you. Lord, I especially tonight, thank you that we're honoring a dear man in our city, Mr. White, and I thank you for his leadership that he's provided here through his time of working for Hamlet, and I pray for his retirement, Lord, that he will enjoy that. Lord, thank you again, and we ask all this in the name of your son, our dear Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. And let's also tonight keep in mind the passing of J.C. Watkins, and he was a nice, a very nice man, very well respected in the community, and we hate that he passed. At this time, council, we have before you the agenda. What are your wishes on that?
Move that we adopt.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Council, item number four, consent agenda. Have before you the approval of the minutes from December thirteenth meeting in the closed session, approval of tax releases, and what are your wishes on those?
Move to approve.
Got a motion, got a second? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. At this time, we move along to comments of attendees. If there's anyone here tonight who has issues that they'd like to bring before the council, please feel free to come forward at this time. Okay, if not, we'll close comments. Moving along to item number six, new business. At this time, we'll do the presentation by the Hamlet Fire Rescue, and we'll turn it over to Chief Goodwin and his crew.
I'll thank everybody for coming. This time, I'll call Mr. Gene McCorn to come up and do the presentation.
Is that mic on?
Chief, is that microphone turned on right there? Green light on, okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's good to be with you tonight. I'm here tonight on behalf of North Carolina Governor Roy Cooper. The governor asked me to be here tonight to make a very special presentation, and I'm honored to do that. The award that we're going to present tonight is called the Longleaf Pine Award. It's an award that can only be given by the governor of our state. A little bit of the history of the award. It was started by former Governor Terry Sanford in the early 1960s, when he was seeking a way to honor those people who had really made a lasting contribution on our state. And he began to present that award to special individuals. And throughout the last 50 years, it's been been given again to those who have really distinguished themselves by all the different governors of our state. And again, it's an award that completely given by the governor. Nobody else has the authority to present this award, and it's given for exemplary service and for outstanding contributions to our state. Gives me a great deal of pleasure. I want to ask Chief White to come forward, and I want to read for him. Chief, would you please come forward? Mayor, would you come and join us as well? And do you have some family members you'd like to join?
Yes.
With us too? Would you all come forward, please? I think it's important for you to hear the nominations that were written to the governor and to ask him to present this award to Chief White. And I'm not going to read the entire letters, but I'm going to give you a copy of these, chief. These were, again, written to the governor. The first one says, "A true public servant. Chief White models his personal and professional lives around the basic tenets of selfless service, servant leadership, strength, and courage. Calvin made a life, not only a career, out of helping others. Firefighting was a calling for him, and he embraced it with zeal, courage, and empathy. Chief Calvin White committed his life to serving his profession, community, and the state of North Carolina." That was written by Marshall Adams David, city manager of Raleigh now. Of course, you're a former manager. Next, from our sheriff, Sheriff Mark Gullidge. "Chief White has dedicated his entire life to helping others during the worst times of their lives. His commitment to others has made Richmond County a safer and better place to live. He has served as a beacon. Chief White, as a young man, showed up at the fire station on his bicycle, eager to learn, and he went on to become the fire chief. With his hard work, his dedication, and his will to succeed, he is a godly man with a lovely family." Again, that's from the sheriff. And then last, from a former mayor, and we could have had a lot of letters written, but we've just got three today, chief. "My former mayor, as you may remember, Hamlet had a tragedy to occur on September 3rd, 1991, that shook our small town to its very foundation. I was mayor at the time, and it had not been for Calvin White by my side to help me struggle through each day afterwards for many weeks, we would not have recovered to the extent that we did. He puts others first. His service, both throughout this tragedy and now, has made a huge positive difference in our community." And that, of course, is from former mayor and now council member Abby Covington. Chief, I want to read to you this award from the governor. "Presents reposing special confidence in the integrity, the learning, and the zeal of Calvin E. White. I hereby present the Order of the Longleaf Pine with the rank of Ambassador Extraordinaire, privileged to enjoy fully all the rights granted to the members of this exalted order, among which is the special privilege to propose the following North Carolina toast." Now, you're going to have to memorize this. "In select company anywhere in the world. Here's to the land of the Longleaf Pine, the summer land where the sun does shine, where the weak grow strong and the strong grow great. Here's to down home, the old North State." And it's signed by our governor today, January 10th, 2023. So you now have a new title, Ambassador White. Congratulations, chief, and God bless you, and thank you for all you mean by community.
Speech.
Well, Mayor, council, thank y'all so much. I appreciate this more than you know. I'm going to try to keep it together. It's been a long journey, but thank y'all. Everybody that's here, you have no idea what it means to me. Thank you so much. We'll talk more when we get over there. I'll be better off, but I just want to say to my family, friends, members of the department, this great city of ours, and to our great people that run it, thank y'all so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. There are a large number of people here tonight who were here when Calvin first started, and I'm really glad to see them here tonight and all these along the way. And Ms. Covington, do you have comments you'd like to make?
No.
Okay. I thought maybe she's going to y'all. Y'all went through a lot, and that's great.
We're going to move over next door.
Yep. Is there anyone else that's got anything tonight to present to Calvin? Okay. All right, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
And... Y'all are going to go leave us with the business. We'll be there later, just to save us a place.
Very seldom do you see somebody that nobody can say anything about.
It is so hot in here.
Great, yeah, great.
Do you not think it's hot?
Well, you know, you're in a trance right now.
Lordy.
We're tag teaming.
Sir?
Said we're tag teaming.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
I think it's 6:30 was our starting time.
I know, sir.
You got it.
We need to turn the air conditioner on.
Are you going to leave us before the day of greeting?
Six or 6:30.
Six.
Six. Two.
Yeah, he said, he's going in.
Did you ask Will if they were coming to the program?
They what?
Asked Will if they were coming to the program to cover that? His retirement dinner. Will told her.
Oh, yeah. That's all right, Will, go ahead. Yeah. I'm going. Everybody's up here, I'm going to go ahead with the program. Item number seven, consideration for resolution 2023-01, Union County Community Action Lease. What are your wishes on that?
He was just asking for the wishes.
She can't hear us.
You can't hear us?
No.
We've got it turned on.
I would just ask what the city manager's opinion would be or recommendation.
This is just a renewal, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a renewal of the existing lease.
I know what it is, I just want to hear his recommendations.
Yeah, thank you. Just briefly, the facility there is in use, it's occupied, they've made improvements. I don't have any issues with continuing the terms as written, so my recommendation would be to renew the lease.
Then I'll make a motion that we approve the recommendation of the city manager that we continue the Union County Community Action.
I got a motion, got a second? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Item number eight is consideration of resolution 2023-02, which is a surplus of the Spartan ladder truck.
Move that we approve.
Got a motion, got a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. There it goes.
Who made the second?
Maurice.
Yeah, Maurice.
I guess.
Okay.
They look sharp in their uniforms, I tell you.
Okay.
Yeah, I would just note, just to point out for city council there, the resolution to surplus, the ladder truck also includes the surplus of a garbage truck, and those are preventative measures in case the auctions exceed the $30,000 that the city manager has approved to surplus.
Okay. Okay, item number nine is consideration of the calendar for the budget work sessions. That's January 24th, March 28th, April 25th, May 23rd, June 27th, if needed. What are your wishes on that, council?
Does anybody have any problem with them?
Uh-uh.
I do, but I'll work it out with Charlie. Okay. All in favor say aye. Wait a minute, I didn't get a motion. I need a motion on it.
I moved that we approve.
All right, we've got a motion, and I got a second from Maurice. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Okay, item number 10 is discussion of the DOT sidewalk project. Mr. Christian?
Yes, sir, Mayor. I just want to briefly update council. I received a contact from NC DOT regarding a sidewalk project that's part of the regional transportation plan. I do have a brief couple of slides that show what that project is, but just for an overview, these are two sidewalk sections. One is from 177 to Wiregrass Road along Spring Street. The other is from Bridges to 38 on Main Street. So I'll just pull these slides up here. Just a quick, that's just what I just said there. So there's two sidewalk sections in the project. This is just kind of a map. I can pull up a separate map if you want to see it, but essentially, it's bridging the gap between Wiregrass and 177.
I am glad to see that. We've been trying to get that done for years.
That's right, yeah. It's been something that's been on the prioritization for a long time. I received an email about a year ago, actually, that the original amount that was estimated for this was like $100,000, less than $200,000. That's not going to cover it, and they did a reassessment of those projects, and it's much closer to $1 million now. So that's why this project is, I'm presenting you the information today. We don't have to make a decision today, but since I had the information and we were together, I wanted to just provide this brief presentation. This is a locally administered project, which means that city staff and engineers would carry out the project. DOT would not carry out the project. They're just going to provide funding for the project. That funding is 80% of the project estimate, which was updated in March 2022, so it's a fairly recent update relative to the scope of the project, excuse me there. And it's an 80/20 project with 80% from NC DOT and 20% from the city of Hamlet. So that's all the information I have right now. Like I said, we do not need to take action on this unless you want to, unless you, council desires to do so, but I just wanted to make sure you had the information because it's something that has been in the regional level for a long time. It kind of landed in my lap about a year ago, and now that the budgets have finally been updated, it was time to share this with you all for our consideration now or in the future.
When you say it's not going to be administered by NC DOT, does that mean we do the work?
We do the work.
Will our labor count as in-kind contributions toward our $194,000? So we actually have to make a cash contribution of $194,000 plus do the project?
That's right.
And that means we cover the payroll of all the people involved. They cover whatever.
Right, yeah. I think that it would mostly be administrative work. You know, we would have to, some of the work, like for the engineering, the design, you know, the subcontracts, which will do the majority of the work, that would be in the cost share. But, you know, my time or Gail's time, for example, would just be, you know, we would have to do all that coordination. There would not be any value assessed to that in particular.
So we would sub it out, and we could charge that to their 80%?
We could, yeah. That will be captured in the cost of the project.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's kind of a yes and no for your point.
But our contribution monetarily is still 20%?
Yep, 20%. Of the engineering, design, construction, those elements.
Our people are not going to be pouring concrete.
No.
Because you got that state road there, you got a lot of traffic.
Yeah, it'll all be subcontracted.
I just want to also throw out at this point that, don't forget, let's don't forget about the sidewalks on Main Street.
Yeah.
Hamlet Avenue and some of the other ones around town. They're not in great shape at all.
Right.
In twos, what, that way? I mean, I walk them all the time, and I've, just by the grace of the Lord, nobody's gotten hurt. So we need to look at doing something with those as well.
Yeah, that's a really great point, Mr. McQueen. When you look at this project, it's a great opportunity. These are great projects, but I think, you know, the one thing that council will have to consider is if we're going to spend $200,000 on sidewalks or roads and things of that nature, I mean, we are leveraging that here to get, you know, nearly, you know, $700,000, $800,000 from NC DOT. You know, how does that, it's like, they're competing priorities, and we just have to decide.
I'm not against it, I'm just saying, there's tens of thousands of dollars worth of improvements we need.
Oh, yes.
And do we need to do something like this? And just basically add more sidewalks that we're not going to be able to keep up.
Right, it's a large capital project, and, you know, just with the development of this information, they just reached out, you know, right before the end of the calendar year. I wanted to present it to you today. This is something that we can continue discussing in our work sessions and our, and of course, it's a large capital project, so, you know, we need to budget for it, and we're getting ready to go into that. So I think as far as I know, and I can check on this before the next meeting or work session, I don't know exactly what the deadline to make this decision is, but having the information, I thought it was prudent to present it tonight.
Just out of a question, where's the most traffic on the sidewalks at? What area of the city do we have the most traffic?
Well, I could...
Human traffic.
Yeah, I could speak anecdotally to that, but I think we'd have to study it to give you any, like, empirical evidence. But I know that I use the sidewalks, as Mr. McQueen mentioned, he used the sidewalks. I think, you know, the Main Street area gets a lot of traffic, but these two areas that are highlighted in this project were prioritized because of the proximity to local housing. If you think about all the housing developments right there on Wiregrass Road, I mean, these are corridors where people are traveling without pedestrian-friendly infrastructure, so that's why they were prioritized in the regional process. I don't really have a straight answer to your question, but that's why these projects were prioritized at a regional level.
Is it an all or nothing? We have to choose them both or choose none?
I'd have to look into that and find out, but if we choose to proceed, you know, we would have, we would enter into a contract with NC DOT, and that would determine the scope and the responsibilities, and, you know, we'd have to bring that, we'd have to bring that back to you for adoption prior to, you know, taking any action.
I was just wondering if we could possibly just not do both.
Yeah, these projects are at a conceptual level. I asked, you know, I was like, is there a map or is there a drawing? Like, no, there's no, this is just like a project that has been prioritized at the regional level. The most description we have is the description that's right here. There's no, I made these little maps just to show, to illustrate, but there's been no design work done or anything like that. So it's just, it's at its infancy.
Okay, any further on that? Okay, move along to item number 11, a budget amendment, 2023. Mr. Christian, you want to comment on that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We added these just earlier today, and because we had a couple of last-minute developments. The first budget amendment is for some emergency repairs for our bulldozer that works at our landfill. This would replace both tracks and service the equipment, which is very much needed. It's not operable at the moment. And that would be covered using ARP funds to avoid pulling out of the general fund. The other budget amendment is for, just because we're doing budget amendments, the police department has some needs at the firing range that I've been working with the police chief on. The $1,700 that you see added to the firing range expense is balanced by the revenue that they've already received from recycling the brass out there. So nothing major there, but just putting that money back into the firing range.
Has there ever been, I noticed that you're using these ARP funds down here, has there ever been any clarification from the county about what they intend to do with that $2 million nugget they laid out in November?
I've not received any notification from the county regarding that.
So, okay.
Not to my knowledge, is, I guess, would be the short answer.
So is that going, you don't know whether that affects what they normally give us?
No.
From, or have given us?
No, the ARP funds that I'm referring to and these budget amendments are the ones that we've already...
We got directly.
Yeah, we got.
Yeah, that we got directly. I was just wondering if there's a kind of a nebulous alternative financial resource floating out there that we possibly can plug into some of our needs?
Yeah.
Do I have a motion on budget amendment?
Move that we approve. Second.
Okay, you got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. All right, item number 12, you'll note, do you have a copy in your folder of a donation of AEDs to the police department to be able to put one in every car?
We would have one in each, on each shift.
Oh, supervisor car or?
Yeah, so I think like a supervisor and a patrol car on each shift would have one.
Oh, okay. Council, need a motion to accept this gift?
So move.
Motion?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Okay, I have a mayoral proclamation for the proclamation of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Whereas Monday, January 16th of 2023 has been designated as a national holiday honoring the late Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., an American who dedicated his life to the fundamental principles of freedom, opportunity, and equal justice for all. And whereas today, all Americans benefit from Dr. King's work and his legacy of courage, dignity, and morality, and moral clarity; and whereas on the steps of the Lincoln Memorial, Dr. King spoke passionately of his dream for America whereby all citizens would be judged by the content of their character and not by the color of their skin; where all citizens would enjoy the riches of freedom and the security of justice, and where the doors of opportunity would be open to all mankind. Now therefore be it resolved that I, William Bayless, Mayor of the city of Hamlet, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim Monday, January 16th, 2023, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day in the city of Hamlet and encourage all citizens to observe this day with appropriate activities and programs that honor the memory and the legacy of Dr. King. Next item of business would be item number 14, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I will start off with, the city hall will be closed on Monday in observance of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. I believe there are some programs beginning later this week, and I'll let other folks speak to those that are more knowledgeable on the subject. But I do want to point out, and this is kind of a current issue, we do have a little bit of a delay in the delivery of our water bills. The city staff submitted everything on time, but there have been delays from, you know, the subcontractor that actually prints and mails the bills. So if you have not received your bill, you can call to get information about your balance or using our new online portal, all that information is up to date. So you can use the links on the city website to log in online, check out your bill. We apologize for any inconvenience that this may have caused, but your bills are en route. So in the meantime, if you have questions about your bills, call us or use the online portal. Basketball season is underway. We had great turnout for the registration on that. Basketball season is underway, we had great turnout for the registration on that, and, um, I wanna thank city council for supporting the renovation of the floor there, we've got a lot of really positive feedback on that. We have, um, purchased and received the ladder truck, it's in service, they're still working on it, um, but, uh, the, the, that you approved at the last meeting, uh, it is here in the city and it is available for use, hopefully, uh, we don't need it, but it is here available for our use. Uh, we also received, um, a vacuum truck that we purchased secondhand from, uh, Southern Pines, I wanna thank the town of Southern Pines for their, uh, partnership and giving us that piece of equipment that they are surplusing, uh, they didn't give it to us, we paid for it, but we paid a fair value for it, and, uh, it'll last us a long time, be very useful for us and help us, um, maintain our, our, um, our sewer system, our storm drains in a way that, um, really helps us elevate to the next level, so, we're really excited about that, but, um, I'll be brief and conclude there, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
In reference to the bills?
Yes, sir.
When are they gonna be there?
I do not know.
Are we gonna do any cutoffs or anything like that because of that, I think we've had this conversation before, I mean, if, I mean, a lot of people don't use online stuff, they don't go to portals and things like that, I'd hate to see somebody not get their bill, and, I mean, the facts are, they get the bill, they pay it.
Right.
I don't wanna see us cut anybody's water off or, I mean.
Give any heartache or count off.
Yeah, I mean.
Or burn, yeah.
Well, just throwing it out there, it seemed like, this happened not long ago, it seemed like.
It, it actually kinda happens, it seems to happen around this time every year with the holidays and it, it's, it's.
I just wanna be careful that we're not.
I agree, I agree with you.
That, that we're not.
Hundred percent. If, if they are not at fault for the, for, for, for the, uh, delay of bills.
Right.
Had nothing to do with it, that's our end, no cutoffs.
No cutoff, sure, or late charges on it.
Right.
Or late charges on it.
Sure, I mean, I think if city council would like, if you'd like to formulate that in a motion and, you know, kinda, yeah.
Whatever, I just think, I mean, because I don't.
I'd be happy to carry out whatever you like.
I, I, I fully say that that, that needs to happen, but.
When were the water?
I wanna hear everybody else's.
I think we need to relieve any late charges.
Well, I don't think. I just know, it hasn't been too long ago, we, somebody's water, during holidays and they couldn't get up nobody through.
But if it's not their fault.
If it's not their fault.
If it's not their fault, they shouldn't have to be penalized.
Yeah.
By cutting off the water or penalized by a late fee, period.
When, when were the water bills mailed?
Uh, we received.
Has the company put them in the mail at this point?
We received confirmation from the vendor on Thursday, so that would've.
Last week.
Yeah, so that was.
Which that would've been January.
I mailed a bill to him. Time Bluff, three weeks ago, he got it today.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I'm just throwing.
But that's the post office.
Yeah.
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 They could've had my carrier, she comes down from Southern Pines to carry my mail, she could've taken it back with her.
She could've carried it back over there.
Yeah. After she does arrive there.
I don't wanna have to cut my own grass.
We need a motion, or, what do we need, a motion or what?
I defer to the attorney.
I, I, I think what might be easiest and that way it's, it's equitable across the board is just, you know, move to, um, waive any late charges, uh, for a month, and does that cover folks getting cut off?
Hmm, and it's, yeah, I could.
You could do that, yeah, just waive late charges and, um, cancellation service for a month, and that way, you're, you're gonna get some people who just didn't pay their bill and sees a little money, but it wouldn't be anybody who gets penalized because of this.
Would it, would it be fair to say to delay it until the month of February, assuming everything gets back on track, we just catch up in February?
With the next billing cycle.
No, I was thinking until February, like, the normal February billing cycle, we wouldn't do late charges until we would've done them in February or, um, or cutoffs.
Make a motion for that.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Whatever that was.
Whatever, yeah.
Gail, have you got that motion?
Not really.
Uh, move to waive any late charges for a month and cancellation of service for a month.
Okay.
Yes.
Fair.
Make a motion.
Fair.
All right, I got a motion.
Jesse made a motion, I made a second.
Okay. Any further?
Everybody.
Okay, any further comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise, all right. What else you got? You got anything?
That was the conclusion of everything I had.
All right, we'll move along to comments and counsel, uh, Mr. Morton.
Well, I don't, um, have anything really, except, um, uh, I know, I know we still got some time, but spring is coming, and we haven't discussed what we're gonna do about the South Hamlet Park, uh, that, you know, the, you know what's happened down there, the, the equipment was destroyed and this and that, but irregardless, it's not the children's fault, and the spring is coming, and I want to see that park back in operation by spring, uh, so these kids can have somewhere to go play on the playground and this and that, and, uh, I know we haven't had any discussion on it lately, but I want it back on the burner, I want us to start thinking about it, I know we can't do nothing tonight or talk about it, I mean, it's other than say, well, we'll discuss it in our upcoming budget meetings and stuff like that, but I want it back on the burner, and, uh, I know we got some insurance money as a result of the damage that was done down there, and I know we, uh, you know, it's, I know it's a problem, but we've had, we've had it over a year to, to determine what the problem is and do something about the problem, I hadn't heard anything, so if, whatever we need to do, we need to do it, whether it put cameras up, I don't know what we need to do to protect the property down there, but we need to do something, so I need, I want, I want the council to be aware that this, that, you know, this is coming up, uh, we need to discuss it, be thinking about it, what we can do, what we should do, what we can do, can't do, or whatever, but that park needs to be put back in service.
Can I, can I say something? I support that idea, and I think let's don't wait until spring, let's get it going ASAP because.
Well, it'll take till spring to get there.
And it comes back in because the weather, if you got these beautiful sun, sunny days and Carolina blue skies, you're gonna get out there and shoot a few hoops, and you're gonna warm up, you're gonna be moving, so I would say let's get, and as, uh, uh, my colleague said, it's not the children's fault, we're penalizing the children, who we ought to do is correct the situation and penalize the people that are vandalizing it, if we can, if we can catch them, so I'd like to put the, uh, South Hamlet Park, it seems like we're throwing money down the drain, I understand that, keep repairing it, repairing it, but it's still not, we've got to provide for the children, and they're the future, and let's get it on the front burner, not the back burner, and have it ASAP, that's my part for you.
Well, uh, obviously, I agree with Doshka, uh, yeah, he's right, but obviously, I mean, as soon as we start, that's great, but it's still gonna take some time.
It'll take time.
To get everything in order and to get the paperwork done and get the things ordered and get all this done, so I figure, hopefully by spring, we should be in operation, uh, but that's, that's about all I can say about that, and while I'm on the subject of sports or one thing or another, um, American Legion will be starting back up next, this spring pretty soon, and, uh, uh, I want us to, you know, fully support the American Legion team and, and, and the staff that try to get it together, and, uh, next month, I believe, Chip Gordon, he's the, uh, coach and director, I guess, he's in charge, and, uh, he briefly, uh, uh, told me about something about the field that, that needs to be done, I don't know exactly what he was talking about, uh, but, uh, but I told him, I said, uh, you need to get your fax and get your, your, your stuff together and come to the meeting in February, and let the council and the city manager and all of us know what you need to bring the park up to the standard it has to be, hopefully we'll get a state tournament in there this year, or, this year or next year, I'm not sure, he's talking about twenty-three or four, I think he said twenty-three, which would be this year, and, uh, so hopefully we can get moving on, on, on those projects and be thinking about what, what, uh, we need to do and listen to Chip Gordon when he comes in, I don't know if he's contacted you or not, he did, okay, well, I told him, I said, you contact the city manager and tell him what you need or what you want, and, uh, so that he'll be fully aware of what the park needs, I mean, something about the field, the level, I don't know exactly what he's talking about, but anyway, uh, he'll know more about it next week, uh, next month when he comes in here, hopefully he'll be here next month and tell the council what it is, and y'all be thinking about, you know, uh, doing what we can to support the American Legion and their efforts out there, that's all I have. I know we made it through Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Years, and we end a new year, I hope everybody has a nice, safe, wonderful, prosperous new year, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Morton, Mr. Sellers?
I agree with, uh, thank you, I agree with Eddie about the, uh, about the American Legion field, uh, I think if Chip would come down here with a, with an itemized report and what need to be done, then get a cost figure on it as well, uh, I'd like to congratulate Calvin White, he, as I was telling the brother Jesse here, I, you just can't think of enough good things to say about Calvin White, uh, he just, he's just a, just a fine human being and is a credit to Hamlet, North Carolina, and he did us a great job, and I'd also like to, uh, people to congratulate our animal control officer, if anyone has noticed about the stray animals around the city, he, this guy is doing a fantastic job, uh, on our strays, and he's cleaning it up, and, uh, I'd like to commend him and the city manager and the city hall for doing a wonderful job on that because it was really a bad, bad problem at one time, and I'd like to, uh, wish everyone a happy new year, a healthy new year, and please bring any concerns to the council or to the city manager who are here, if we don't know, we don't know, unless you bring it to us, and maybe we can get some, if it's a concern, maybe we can get it ironed out, and that's all, that concludes my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Stewart?
Uh, just like Mr. Sellers said, can't think of enough nice things to say about, um, Mr. White, great guy, greatest guy ever, so, thank you to him, uh, as Mr. Martin, I'm glad he brought that up, we had a concerned citizens meeting in the, um, South Hamlet community before the holidays, um, a few citizens came out, so we wanna, we're gonna kick that back up, and so we definitely wanna make sure that we are putting things in place for those children in that, in that community, and, uh, appreciate what you said, it's not the kids' fault, so we definitely wanna, I'm gonna be a part of that, and I'm, I'll let you all know when we're gonna do the next meeting and all that great stuff, so we, we definitely wanna get started with that. Mr. J.C. Watkins, he was a giant in this community, um, I sit here, um, I owe a great, you know, a debt of gratitude to him, um, him being the first black male on the Rockingham City Council, um, nineteen thirty-nine, a man going to college on a scholarship at Shaw College and now Shaw University, he paved the way for me, and he has sat down with me a number, a numerous of times and just gave me so many nuggets, he moved on to, um, right, he moved on from city council to county commissioner, and there's just not enough things again to say about him, and his wife, Ms. Ruth Watkins, as well, they were educated in this community and, um, a lot of folks in this community owe a debt of gratitude to him, so, rest in peace to him, one hundred years old, probably up until three years ago, he stopped driving, and, and he mentioned, he's never really been sick and been in the hospital, so what a great life he lived, and, you know, to be, if he had lived to be in March, would've been one-on-one, so, definitely, um, rest in peace to him. Martin Luther King Foundation, I sit on that board, um, the, we thank the city council and the City of Hamlet for sponsorship, um, for the MLK Foundation, we have, um, a numerous of activities, Friday night, there is a MLK Gala, Saturday, please come out to the parade, it starts at twelve noon downtown Rockingham, um, Sunday is an ecumenical service at the New Bethel Church in Dobbin Heights Community at five PM, and then we will follow up with a MLK luncheon on Monday at twelve noon at the Wayman Chapel, Wayman Chapel, um, Faith Center here in Hamlet, so we would love to have you all join us, uh, MLK was a, definitely a gentleman for all people, um, when I think of him, I think of courage, um, and legacy, um, and, you know, when, at a time where you knew you would get in trouble and, and be hurt and even killed, um, it didn't stop a lot of those people from moving forward with the things that they did, and so I thank him for that, I thank you all for the sponsorship, and I encourage you all to please support the foundation with the activities coming this weekend, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart, Ms. Covington?
Um, I wanna echo particularly Maurice's sentiments about J.C. and Ruth Watkins, I always thought they were a dynamic duo, they were an incredible pair, she, they both were educators their entire lives, and they educated people not only academically, but in so very, very many ways, and they were truly both groundbreakers and pioneers and, and I, J.C. reminds me a lot of Calvin in his quiet, unassuming way, quiet voice, wisdom, truthfulness, exemplary leadership, um, I just, and I think we're fortunate when we have people, particularly during this week, which is the, kind of the preceding week before the MLK holiday, and you have people like, um, honest black men to stand up, like Martin Luther King and J.C. Watkins and Calvin White, these are the people that I feel like set the best example for the reg, for the progress in our community, and I, I really don't think we can say enough good things about them or hold them up high enough to say, you know, this is, these people are worth emulating, so, that, like I said, J.C. Watkins and Ruth were a phenomenal pair of people, and I know that since her passing, he has, it has not been the same for him. Also, um, there is a, a program that he did not mention, I think Daniel Bowie is the Parade Marshal?
Dante, yeah.
Dante, Dante Bowie is the Parade Marshal, he's doing a concert, he's a contemporary Christian artist, he's doing a concert at, the doors open at two and the concert's at three, he has a lot of musical honors to his tribute, and that is a free concert, and it's at Rockingham Metal Concert starts at three, if anybody's interested, I think that would be well worth going to, and like everybody has said, we survived the holidays, and that's how I feel when I come out on the other end of it, I survived it, but, um, we're off on a new year, and I would hope that you could get some information about alternative funding sources for major projects that we need, um, and how much, how much are we gonna have to fund out of our budget, and are there any special projects that we can possibly pick up off this two million dollar grant program, and if the county intends to refund our portion of the sales tax again next year, so that when we start our workshops, we're operating from ground zero.
That it?
That's it.
Okay, Mr. McQueen?
Uh, basically, just, I wanna reiterate what everybody said, um, January sixteenth, as everybody reflect on the legacy of Dr. King and what he did and his impact left on the community, and, uh, Mr. Watkins, you, you won't find a, a, a better person around anywhere, served this, this county and, um, his community honorably and admirably, um, and this county will be, um, at a loss with him not being here anymore, um, as for Calvin, I mean, what can you say? Um, a great guy, a great fire chief, and a really good friend, um, Calvin's a special person, you don't go through life and see many people who, nobody can say anything bad about them, nobody, that man is the epitome of a class act, and this town is better for him being here during his tenure here, and on a personal level, I think I'm a better person for being around him as long as I was, um, somebody that I always looked up to as a young police officer starting out, um, Calvin would, he would tell you what, what needed to happen, and you just sort of took what he said as, as fact, because he was just that kind of person, he was a great guy, and I'm glad that he had that honor bestowed upon him, and I hope he continues, and I know he will, to still be a part of the Hamlet Fire Department in the City of Hamlet, um, other than that, just, uh, appreciate everybody on the council that, um, took up some slack for me last month, I wasn't able to be at the meeting, had, did a little traveling, seen my, my, my family, and, and I know that the town was in good hands, uh, with these fine folks up here, and that's all I have.
Could I make one comment, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
In my comments, I failed to mention, like other council members have said, uh, concerning Calvin, uh, I, I'll only reiterate what, what others have said, and, uh, he's a great, great servant to the city and, uh, uh, congratulate him and, uh, on his retirement, and, uh, Mr. Watkins, I agree with, with everybody has said about Mr. Watkins. And uh, Mr. Watkins, I agree with, with everybody has said about Mr. Watkins. I'd have to say that I owe a great debt to, uh, gratitude to uh, uh, Mr. Watkins. He was on the city council when I was appointed by him and his colleagues, other council members, to the position of Chief of Police in Rockingham. And uh, I always remembered him for that. And I appreciated it very much, but, because without him or the others, I wouldn't, wouldn't have been there. I still don't understand, how in the world they selected old Hamlet boy to go over there? But uh, but they did. Thirty years later, I, I came back to Hamlet. But anyway, I just want to make that known that uh, Mr. Wa, I have a great deal of respect for him and a debt of gratitude for, for his uh, vote the night that I was uh, selected. Thank you.
That's one of his many good votes.
And I'll say the same thing about J.C. and Ruthie, I, I got to know him when I first got on council. And uh, he was a lot of help to me, I learned a lot from him, we went to a lot of conferences together. And um, every time I would see him, I'd make an effort to speak to him, he was a member out at the coal auditorium and every time we had a program, I'd have to stop and talk to him and Ms. Ruthie. So they're gonna be citizens that are to, really gonna be missed and uh, we need to think about that. The uh, got my notes written down here, I can't read what I wrote. Anyway, Calvin, I've known Calvin since the day he started riding that bicycle to the fire department. And uh, all of us looked after him back then and he has really come along and he has just been a, just a tremendous person. He has been a blessing to the City of Hamlet and uh, we're gonna miss him. And I'm, as some others said, we hope that he stays active in the city because he, that would be great. Wish everybody a happy new year, uh, last year went well, all things considered. We have got a great council up here, they do great work together, they work together, discuss things. And I just appreciate the council being as good as they are. And the city employees, uh, the staff, uh, it's just, it's just been a blessing working with you. So uh, everybody have a good new year. And with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I got a, two motions, I got a motion and.
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise.